Next up, next up is the Yuba Sutter Chamber Film Commission presentation, and that will be presented by Marnie Sanders from the Yuba Sutter Chamber of Commerce.
Good evening, Council. Thanks so much for having me tonight. And I am actually presenting on the Yuba Sutter Film Commission, and I'm co-presenting tonight, and I'll introduce my co-presenter in a moment here. But so I've had an opportunity to talk to some of you, so some of this you will have heard from me before about. But just for the audience, and to introduce, I think, in more depth, what a film commission is all about, I just want to give a quick introduction. And then, okay, there we go. If I can do the pointer. Okay. So what is a film commission? For those who don't know what a film commission is, a film commission is an organization that operates in your community to attract production to the area, to attract the film industry to the area. They come into the community, and they are utilizing a lot of our services, and they're utilizing a lot of our products, locations, that sort of thing. But a film commission is working to attract them and to be basically a liaison to them while they're here. So they're here to help them to navigate the community and to find the resources that they're looking for and the support that they're looking for while they're here. And really, the film industry is looking for an organization like that within their communities. Communities are often overlooked if they don't have a film commission, because they just want to do away with trying to figure out how to navigate through a community. Instead, they can pick up the phone or shoot an email, and they've got a person that they can connect with to connect them to whatever it is that they're looking for within that community. And so really, you know, why should we think about having a film commission here in Yuba Sutter? Well, it can have a significant economic impact for our community, and really, it can be of benefit to our entire community. So like I said earlier, when you attract production to a community, you are attracting people who stay in our hotels, who are eating in our restaurants, who are utilizing catering, different kinds of services. I've listed some examples. I mean, the sky's the limit, depending on what the production is that's coming to town. It could be a big film, it could be a commercial. But there's all sorts of opportunities with production. And all of those dollars are being spent in our community. It's tax revenue for our community, and it really can add up over time, especially if we have a dedicated effort to attracting that production to the community. So at this time, like I said, I've talked to many of you about this. I've talked ad nauseam, really, about the film commission. But really, I'm really excited about it. I think there's an amazing opportunity for our community. This is a conversation that we have had for, I think, at least a couple of decades, from what I have gathered. There have been people in the community that have started a film commission on a volunteer basis. We've even attracted through that a Rolling Rock commercial to the community. But there has not been a really concerted effort to make this happen in the community. So really, we're very interested in making this happen at this point. And obviously, the chamber sees the value in this because of the impact on our business community can be great. And obviously, the economic vitality of our community will be greatly impacted by it as well. So we're very interested in seeing this through. And so in that process, we've gathered a committee. We have a committee member here tonight, David Reed, who's been sitting on the committee. And then my co-presenter tonight, who is Sabrina Jorisich. She is the Shasta County Film Commissioner for Film Shasta. And she has been an incredible help to us as we try to navigate what a film commission is and how we can bring one to the community. So she brings with her an incredible amount of knowledge in her time that she's run the Film Commission in Shasta County. And I thought it would be of benefit for the council to hear from that perspective, running a film commission, how it has benefited Shasta County, how a film commission is run. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Sabrina, and then I will be advancing the slides, and it will work perfectly. I just know it. Okay. And I'm on the first slide.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Marnie, and thank you, everyone, for, you know, allowing this to be on the agenda tonight. It is very exciting, and Marnie has definitely assembled an amazing team of people, and the community has been so receptive so far. So I'm very excited to share with you about what's happened here. So Shasta County actually has a really long history of serving productions. But in 2014, a film commission was designated. And as Marnie mentioned, basically, a dedicated effort, as she said, was established, funding started being put towards a position to see what that would do. And the county provided an official designation. And I'm going to be excited to show you a few chart. Marnie will flip through to some charts in a moment to kind of show the difference pre-film commission and what we're currently seeing. But basically, one of the things that happens when you have that level of designation and when you really have a liaison established in your area is you get access to industry affiliations that validate that your community is really film-friendly. And so some of those would include film liaisons in California statewide, which is a network of film commissioners throughout the state. We have Association of Film Commissioners International, which is about 1,100 film commissioners throughout the world. And California Film Commission, which oversees our tax credit program in the state, as well as the Location Managers Guild International. And that's a network of location professionals that are specifically looking for locations. So all of these affiliations basically, you know, provide leads to us for high-quality projects that are looking at filming throughout the state of California. And so that is not available without a designated film commissioner in your community. Next slide, please. So Marnie had mentioned, you know, some of the benefits of filming in a community. Obviously, job creation is one of our top priorities. The position exists to promote economic development to a community. And so we definitely want to make sure that we're hitting, you know, local hires on projects. But then also, you know, in the hospitality industry, as productions increase in a community, you may see some job additions in those outlets as well. When a production comes, they're immediately injecting money into the local economy. And that is something that doesn't require brick and mortar. It's just an immediate infusion. And most of the time, the local community isn't even aware that a production has happened, because they really have a life footprint on the area. It has the potential to attract tourists. I'll give an example later on, again. And it's one of those things that really brings community members together for common, you know, even if it's a commercial. It's something that is exciting, that that particular community has been chosen by a production. And just, you know, allows different conversations to be happening within the community. And then also, you know, it generates tax revenue. So what they're spending in the community does equate to more money for perhaps emergency service personnel or other city projects that need some funding. Next slide, please. So one of the examples that I like to give is the California Tax Credit Program. Just as far as, you know, dollar for dollar, what is being spent versus what is returned. The industry averages about $1 spent to an $8 return rate. The California Tax Credit Program is a good example of this. It's trackable. You can go on the California Film Commission site and review what they've released. But in just this last round, they've released 572 projects that have over almost $18 billion in California expenditures. Now, those are qualified expenditures. So there's actually a higher return than what you're seeing, because there are certain things that don't qualify but are still spent in the communities, if that makes sense. So more money was actually invested into that recently. Governor Newsom signed into more support for the tax credit program and also some additional funding to build sound stages and studios, which are greatly needed. The other thing about your area and mine is that because we are considered out of the zone, which is out 30 miles, we're more than 30 miles outside of Los Angeles and outside of San Francisco. It's a program is approved for the tax credit program. They actually get a 5% boost by filming in our areas that are more rural. And that incentivizes them to hire more local people, you know, and spend more money staying longer in our area, because they're going to get a little more money by doing that. If you could go to the next slide, please. So this chart here is showing our verifiable productions that we've had. And you'll see one dating all the way back to 1918. And basically, when I came into this position, I kind of wanted to know, what was the history? What have we had on record? So this is a mixture of files that we had in our office from a long period of time. But then also outlets like IMDB.com, where you can go and see all kinds of details about productions, anything that was released. And even throughout the years, if somebody has said, "Hey, did you know this filmed here?", it's been added to this chart as it's been verified. But one of the things I definitely like to mention, there's a little arrow on the bottom towards the right-hand side of the screen. And that little arrow indicates when the film commission was officially designated and when funding began. There was an uptick, you'll see, immediately after that arrow in 2015. And it did go down in 2016 when the position was vacant. And I like to point that out, because it's not enough to have a designation. You have to have somebody working the position that knows how to work in the industry, that knows how to serve it, in order to keep the momentum going. So we had, obviously, a downturn in the midst of COVID. But most of that was commercial productions, and that just hit the industry pretty hard. But if you can go to the next slide, Marnie. You'll see our, while the productions went down to a particular degree, the economic impact held pretty strong in 2020. And we're actually surpassed our highest year already in 2021, because production is considered an essential industry in California. So I've worked very closely with our cities and our county to make sure that production can safely go on, keeping our community safe, and while following industry guidelines, which are very strict. They want to make sure that they can keep working, so they're very good at being COVID compliant in the process. So if you could go to the next page, please. So I just did want to share that this year, we've had 31 projects, six scouts, 124 shoot days, 605 reported room nights. And we've already surpassed the $1.6 million that has been our best year ever. So final report will come out at the end of 2021. But we have a lot of demand for locations, and the industry loves new locations. So that's one thing that's going to be wonderful to bring to the table, is that you're going to have an abundance of new locations for location managers to look at as they're considering new projects. Next slide, please. And I just did want to highlight, you know, some of the ways that we measure success. It's one of the beauties of the film industry is that it's reportable. It's trackable from beginning to end. So I can tell you how many inquiries we've had, how many production days we've had, what types of productions are coming, whether it's commercial or independent film, links as productions are released, and, you know, so on and so forth. If we're advertising somewhere, I can tell you what the reach has been and that. And it is very targeted, as far as advertising goes to the industry. So we've been able to measure all those successes. Next slide, please. One of the things that is challenging to track is what we call film tourism. So one of the things about having really great productions come that have a strong reach, whether it's a national commercial or a studio film, which is the best that we could possibly get, getting on screen in front of millions of people is always the way to go. So it can turn into a commercial for your destination. But we still have people come to the Lake Britton Bridge, which is near Bernie Falls, and put themselves in the scene of Stand By Me, where the bridge scene happened. So I don't know how many of you have seen that film, but it's one of those that, you know, decades later, still has an impact on people where they want to come and be part of the production. So that's a benefit to the community long after a production is gone. And I'm happy to answer any questions. And Marnie did a great job of reviewing what a film commission does, but I hope that information helps as well.
Thank you, Sabrina. And Sabrina has taught me a lot about film commission, and I continue to learn more. And it's such an exciting industry. And I hope that you heard from Sabrina the value that a film commission can bring to a community, and certainly has done for Shasta County. And I've had other conversations with other communities with film commissions and very similar stories of economic impact over time when there is a concerted effort focused on attracting production to the area. So again, I see this of great value. So in working with the committee, we've kind of laid out what we see as our three-year plan to get fully up and operational, with our first year being kind of the infrastructure build. So that website, cataloging our area to promote to the film industry, building that social media presence, that we are, in fact, you know, film-friendly. We want you to come do your production here. Working on the designation and the nonprofit status. And then, of course, consultation throughout this process, understanding that we're not the experts, and we're reaching out to the experts to help us get this in place. And so we're looking at about $50,000 in the first year. And then moving into year two and three, more of that, more building of the infrastructure, more really promoting and getting connected to those affiliations that Sabrina had talked about. Getting a part-time staff person who is well-versed in the industry. And then moving into year three, being fully up and operational with a full-time staff person dedicated to promoting the Yuba Sutter area and being that liaison to production when they're in town. And so we are really happy to announce that we have got our first commitment of $25,000 from the Yuba Sutter Lodging Association. And so we're halfway there in our first year, which is really exciting. But what the plan is, is to approach all of our jurisdictions within the Yuba Sutter area and hopefully get a financial commitment from each of the jurisdictions as well. So this is not a one-time, you know, funding request. This would be an annual request. This is an organization that is primarily funded by the jurisdictions in which they operate. So this isn't a strange request in terms of film commissions. So what the plan would be is to, after this, submit a formal financial request to the city council. I have plans. I'm already on the calendar for Marysville City Council and Sutter and Yuba County's Board of Supervisors. We will be doing the same presentation to them as well. This is going to be of benefit to the entire Yuba Sutter area. So really, it's, if you look at that $150,000 in the third year, that's a rough, you know, estimate on what it would cost to have a fully operational film commission. That is a drop in the bucket in terms of, you know, what you're going to see on return of investment. As Sabrina had shown earlier, could be upwards of a million or more in economic impact. So, and, you know, split between the jurisdictions, not a real significant investment, a very worthy investment, for sure. But again, I just wanted to present it formally to the council. Thank you for that opportunity, and we'll plan to submit a formal request. And then, any additional questions or any questions?
From the council? You have something? Go ahead. Go ahead.
Through the mayor. Thanks, Marnie, and I'm sorry, I forgot the young lady.
Sabrina.
Sabrina, thank you. Sabrina, I just had a couple of questions to understand better how you established the Film Commission in Shasta, because you've been doing this. And by the slides, it shows some success, some really good success up in Shasta. So I guess my first question is, how many commissions are established like this in California? Do you know?
Throughout California? I'm sorry, there's a little bit of feedback.
Yes.
So there's 42 film offices that are members of Flix, which means that they have county-wide or greater jurisdiction designation. And so there are, in California right now, there are eight counties above Sacramento that are without representation, including Yuba and Sutter counties.
Okay. Is there any other county near us in those eight?
That has designation? Or I could actually send you a link, or I could share it with Marnie, and she could share it with you, as far as the various offices throughout the state, if that would be helpful information.
Well, more towards the northern part of California. Can you hear me? Most, the northern part.
So right now, I'm actually overseeing Shasta County and Tahima County.
Okay.
And then we have another film commissioner, Cassandra Hasseltine, who oversees, sorry, Humboldt and Del Norte Counties.
Okay.
And then we're pretty much the solitary film commissioners. We do have El Dorado County, Kathleen Dodge. And then in Placer Lake Tahoe, there's Julie Johnson, who's a film commissioner there. But I think otherwise, there's no Flix members north of Sacramento.
So what's the difference between a film commission that is funded by a city or county? How are you funded?
So I'm publicly funded, because we are not allowed to charge productions for our services.
Okay.
Typically, it's either, you know, funded through city or county funds, or a combination of those. Or it could be privately funded if there's an area that... But typically, that's not the predominant support. It could be like a private foundation that helps. And then I also have received funds from, like, business improvement districts through the hotels.
Okay. So your commission is funded by the county? I just want to make sure I have that clear.
Oh, there's funds. So throughout the state, you're going to find all different kinds of funding structures. Typically, they're city and or county funded. My film commission has been funded through a T-Bid Tourism Market or Business Improvement District. And then the city of Redding has been the primary funding sources for my film commission. But there's also been some private sources as well.
Okay, great. What's your annual budget?
I could give you that information offline.
Okay. So you're not a nonprofit? Your film commission?
We are establishing a nonprofit for the Regional Film Commission. We're actually under the umbrella of a different nonprofit at the moment.
Okay. So how many commissioners in your work? Do you have a committee that helps you, or how does that structure look like?
For my office specifically?
Mm-hmm.
I'm the only person in my office at this time. I have people that I bring on for special projects that I contract their services.
I think that's fairly typical as well, that's run by one person.
Just, yeah, I was just trying to understand the structure and how much it would potentially...
You would have, like Film LA, for example, has over 100 film commissioners, or 100 employees.
I could see LA be very different.
Permit processing. So a lot of those people are doing different services than just being the liaison to the film industry, if that makes sense.
Right. I was just wondering if there was a way to show or demonstrate through the work that you've done, you know, if the county is seeing, obviously, the million dollars of revenue that are coming in, over a million, that, you know, knowing that annual budget for the film commission. And are you overseen by the Board of Supervisors? Or which department, you know? How's that structure? And you're saying that other cities do it differently. So there's different ways that this could be completely established. That's what I'm hearing you.
Well, I, because I have a designation from the Board of Supervisors, I report to them directly every year. But then I also report to other stakeholders. So I'll report to the city of Redding, I'll report to my hoteliers, you know. So I report to everybody who has a vested interest in this.
Got it.
And my report's public, so I can share that information with you, too.
Okay. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Yeah, you're welcome.
I think part of what you were asking, it is going to be, it can be a little bit confusing, because we are all sit on several boards and commissions as several people do out there, too, which implies there's several people on a commission, planning commission, for example, right? And it may imply that. But we have a commissioner, or the film commission is a commissioner, who is basically that person, and that's just been entitled. They've just, industry standard is what they've been given. So it's very valuable, and I really appreciate the full of information in your presentation, Marnie and Sabrina. Thank you as well. I really appreciate that. It's, it looks like, it's kind of invigorating and exciting, because when you see, when you get up into seven figures, you have our attention. And, you know, that's a good, not only is it something unique and different, you have folks coming in, doing their projects, injecting these little booster shots, hopefully big booster shots, into our economy. And it's something that's interesting. And at the same time, along the way, fine, and we're getting some notoriety as the bridge thing from that one movie you mentioned, Sabrina. And that's just one example. The example I've been giving to folks is, how many people still go to Bodega Bay to look at Hitchcock's Schoolhouse from that movie, The Birds, right? And they got to buy gas and sleep and eat, too, at the same time. So it's all this residual income. I know that I may not be alone up here in that... First of all, I fully support it. Good to go. To what level? I don't know what we can swing, but that's for us to discuss at a later date. But I forgot what I was going to say.
That was good.
Got too excited.
I got too excited. What was I saying?
He got to the support.
Support.
Full and. You didn't want the rest made.
The, oh my God, how embarrassing is this? What was I going to say? I'll admit it, I forgot what I was going to say. I'm a grandfather, I'm entitled to do that. But I know that it's a good thing, and I just appreciate the fact that we're going to have a lot of this, hopefully, a lot of activity coming here to our community. And thank you so much. And I am just really frustrated that I forgot what I was going to say.
You'll remember later, I'm sure.
This is important, too.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity to come. And for Sabrina, thank you, Sabrina, for lending your expertise.
Yeah, it's interesting, because we have the photography, you know, for example, of our Sutter buttes out here. And we sometimes market it as a hiking mecca, or whatever, and whatever, but you can't get to it, because it's kind of landlocked, or you have to pay. But when you get them on the film, there's one recently when they used Beal as, I think it was Desert. You see U2 taking off, and there's the buttes right there in the background. So what's that?
The Just Fine.
There you go. Spielberg. So anyway, great idea. Mr. Mayor, were you going to...
I've got some folks that want to talk.
Oh, yeah, perfect. Maybe I'll remember what I was going to say.
The timing is perfect.
Ex-wife would love it if she was here.
So first, thank you, Marnie and Sabrina, for your time. We do have a couple folks in the audience that have indicated a desire to speak, which we'll go back to that podium back there. And the first one up is Mr. Ryan Graham. You're welcome.
I'm a supporter as well, just full disclosure. Thank you so much. Green light. Green means go. Hi, my name is Ryan Graham. Thank you for this opportunity and fantastic presentation, Ms. Sanders. And thank you, Chamber of Commerce, for staying in front of this subject. Two years ago, we started a film production company called Orchard Fort LLC. And I just kind of wanted to take an opportunity to provide real-world context to this subject. It's not really pie-in-the-sky stuff. We are currently rounding third base in pre-production on a television pilot. It's a situational comedy. I'm really enthusiastic about this project. We've got, as a production company, we've got SAG signatory status. That is, we are signators to the Screen Actors Guild. That has provided us access to their stable of tremendous, incredible talent with these actresses and actors that got, they have incredible national agency exposure. So we're going to film in Northern California. I would like to shoot in Yuba City. I would like to shoot in Yuba City. I'm from here. There are some locations on location and some exteriors that I'd like to shoot. And the first thing that we would do, and bear with me just a moment, because Sabrina, correct? Sabrina, I believe, I hope I have your name right, because I wrote it down and I'm not looking at it right now. The first thing that we would do is that a location director or a scouting agent would go to Flix, and this is a film liaison in California statewide. And this is sponsored through the, through the California Film Commission. And we would, a scouting agent would look up the location, click on it, the searchable map of California. And if you can see it, there is a swath here, the width of California where Yuba Sutter County should be. What does that translate for, for a, for a film producer, right? That means I could expect my insurance premiums to go up because the smart money, the dudes looking at their actuary tables are saying that I'm at a greater risk of failure should I choose a location that is not represented by a Film Commission? Where do I go for permits, right? These are some, this is some of the paperwork that we need to take to file with the insurance adjusters and with SAG so they can verify that we're keeping their people safe during a pandemic. So that's kind of a stick. A carrot, I'm a, I'm an eternal optimist, and I like to look at the carrot. And this is a big carrot. PWC has just, just released a, their latest figure is $143 billion. That's PricewaterhouseCoopers is estimating that $143 billion, billion with a B, is going to be invested in scripted entertainment this year alone in North America. Never, you know, we think about it, never before has there been such an investment opportunity in scripted entertainment than there is now. Our consumption patterns have changed, right? We, we are hungry for entertainment. And then there's a trend at the same time towards the decentralization of the industry. We don't have to be in L.A., in Hollywood, to shoot a Hollywood-quality film. In fact, the economics are such, we can bring the talent here, shoot using our infrastructure, and save, I mean, we've been running the numbers for a while, at least 62%, almost two-thirds, cost. Demand is up, supply is down. Actually, is that my beep? In fact, my wife, when I was leaving, said, keep it short, if only to get Madam Clerk out of here at a decent hour. So I would love to take this conversation offline. I think, I thank the Chamber for staying ahead of this. I think that this is a really significant investment opportunity. The folks in Los Angeles keep getting shut down because they can't get a hold of their COVID numbers. We should be part of that conversation, and we should be a destination. I think Yuba City should be a destination in how, you know, think you jump in your car, you put an address, Google brings you up your map. We need to get on the map. I think Yuba City, you know, should be on the map just to be ahead of this, involved in these discussions. Thank you. I think my back went out.
Oh, you're good. I just have one question. In your, in your pilot, do you have any roles for forgetful retired CHP?
Actually, there is one.
Okay, good.
We have.
Can you give him one line?
There's 12 to 14 roles that we're going to cast locally.
Okay.
So.
All right, I'll do it.
Taking submissions. Thank you for that.
I wasn't up to memorize anything, we're good.
No, all he says is support.
I would happily take this conversation offline, too. I think my, my information's floating around, so I'd love to, you can tell I'm enthusiastic, so.
It is, I have it, and I'll, we'll chat. That's great.
Thank you.
All right.
All right. Next is Mr. David Reed.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I want to add my support, too, as the Executive Director of the Yuba Sutter Arts and Culture Council and also the owners and operators of the Sutter Theater Center for the Arts. We've been involved with Marty and Sabrina on the Commission Exploratory Committee for many months now. And this, you're talking to a guy or looking at a guy who grew up in L.A. And, you know, film production was on every corner that I lived and worked in my 25 years there before I moved back to Washington, D.C. And there were a lot of films being produced in D.C., too. But, and as far as the, the comment was made about community pride, it's just like when Spielberg came to town with Bridge of Spies, and just for that day or two, I mean, the whole town lit up on social media. And so there's something to be said for that. Is that equate to dollars and cents? Yes, ultimately, but it's also like, it makes you feel good, you know? We're part of something bigger than ourselves. So that was a, a great fun thing that I enjoyed. You know, film is in the air here in Yuba Sutter. As I think many of you know, we, Yuba Sutter Arts, will be hosting a short film festival. Submissions are due September 19th. If you got a 13-minute or less in the, one in the bag, as long as it was filmed in Yuba Sutter, we're going to be showing those on October 2nd in the New Sutter Theater as a film festival. Looks like it's going to be about a two-hour program. We've also gotten submissions, coincidentally, from international filmmakers. Short films have been coming in, so we're already planning our next kind of international short film festival. We're also, October 23rd and 24th, another filmmaker in town will be doing a world premiere of his feature film. There are other filmmakers in town in addition to this gentleman, who I've just met, and we've got to connect at some point. You know, it's, it's here. It's up to us to package it and, and help market it. And this, as Sabrina and Marty have pointed out, this really becomes a, a kind of a sales job to some extent. You got to know what you're talking about, you got to have the resources, you have to have the location library ready to go. And if you look at any of these other Film Council websites, like El Dorado, Shasta County, and you look at the tabs, it's really kind of cool. It's sort of a, an index of, of that community. And particularly going through the locations, it's really kind of fun. It's sort of a, your own self-guided tour of what's out there that you might not have known about. And I can just imagine the kind of website we'll ultimately develop with these locations available to location managers and these production companies. I also see it as a, an opportunity for furthering career technical education. We've got a great mass communications department at Yuba College. I can't believe they wouldn't just love the opportunity to work on, on a professional production, whether it's a TV production or a feature film or a commercial. And I think those production companies, at least some of them I've heard, would allow that. So another great opportunity for local film students. So lots of, lots of reasons to justify our overall support of the creation of a, of a Film Commission. So thanks you all, thanks to you all. And now I'm going to go over to the Sutter Theater for our first West Coast Swing dance program tonight, so, thanks.
Thank you, David. Anyone else in the audience care to speak on this subject? How about online?
Public comment.
All right. Well, thank you again. Thank you, Sabrina, Marty, and the rest of all of you who are interested in a Film Commission. We'll look forward to receiving your information.